Good morning. It's 9:00 AM and I will call to the order of the March 23rd meeting of the Board of, Celine County Board of Commissions. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Yes, will you please stand for the flag salute and please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have citizens input. Citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes. For regular business, that's not on today's agenda. Please state your name and address.
Dennis Benoit. I live in Geneseal in Kansas, but I was born here in Salina and I consider it as my hometown. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm here to kind of give you a video review of an important event that happened in 2004 about the vaxxed movie. It was about the criminal conspiracy to make a scientific study corrupted. And the important players all play themselves in the movie. You'll be seeing pictures of Dr. William Thompson. He's the whistleblower. And Dr. Julie Gerberdin. She was the CDC director. And the other player is the virus court. In 1986, an act was passed for the childhood vaccine injury. And the virus court, which is not a court, it's not your standard court, it's sort of like a board meeting. That was signed by Ronald Reagan. Well, that was... Julie Gerberdin was the director and she wanted... They had at the virus court a large number of autistic children, a class action suit. So she wanted the next scientific study to come out to be clean. No reference, direct reference to autism. And that's how they corrupted. From top-down pressure, Julie Gerberdin was watching out for the virus court. And she put pressure on Dr. William Thompson to delete the truth because she didn't want that latest scientific study to go to the virus court because of all those autistic children. And in the movie, you also meet the children that play the part. They are autistic children. Most of them have videos of before they were given autism by the MMR vaccine. And you will meet the children in videos. And... But that is my movie review. It is very important and it needs to be seen. That's your history.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
No one has raised their hand, however, Mr. Farber did have his hand raised, which it is raised now. Mr. Farber unmuted.
All right.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good to see you guys and I appreciate you taking our public comments this morning. I just wanted to address something that has gone on in our county and that has to do with the mask mandates. We've seen over in Dickinson County that they have allowed their mask mandate to fall away, to be dismissed. And I appreciate the way that their board addressed that, not just with the facts and the input, but they took a lot of the data into mind as well. And I just wanted to bring up a few of the things that they mentioned and I'm hoping that that will affect you guys and your decision as well. Some of the data that they brought up is that the CDC even says that the masks, the surgical masks and cloth masks are 55% to 65% effective against this virus. And one of the doctors described that as throwing mud through a chain-linked fence. And I thought that was a wonderful illustration to use. The CDC also says any person fully vaccinated need not wear a mask when in proximity of other vaccinated individuals or asymptomatic persons. They referenced how Dr. Fauci refers to a mask as a symbol of goodwill towards his neighbor. And they even brought up the idea, and we've heard this phrase lately, of mask theater and virtue signaling with a lot of it. But I think the greatest argument for getting rid of these mask mandates is when we take into consideration the state of California and the state of Florida. California has been locked down. They've been mask mandated. They've been quarantined for this entire year, basically. And Florida has released it. They have no mask mandates. They have no limitations on gatherings, which I understand the county, Celine County, has now allowed that to expire as well. And the numbers are the same between California and Florida. There's no great increase in the fact that nobody is wearing a mask. In fact, Florida has a greater population of the at-risk category. Nearly 20% of their population is in the 65-year-old and older range. I think what I'm trying to say is that I'm not against masks. I wear masks when I go into businesses if they ask me to wear that. But I don't think this board should be mandating each individual to wear a mask. If a person chooses to wear a mask, that's fine, or two masks, or however the new guidance comes out. But if a person chooses not to wear a mask, he should not be fined. He should not be kicked out, that type of thing. And I think that's what a group of citizens here in Celine County are trying to push forward, is that we just want the freedom to make the same decisions that everybody else is making. It seems like those who are against masks are being segregated out and attacked because of their beliefs and it's not going the other direction. And it's time for us in Salina and Celine County to get along, to put these things down, to put our differences aside and move forward. It's time for us to move forward against this disease, against this virus. And I'll leave off with this famous statement by Ben Franklin, and I've said it many times and I believe it holds true in this regard as well. Mr. Franklin said, "Those who would give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." Fellas, it's time to take down this mask mandates. The numbers are down. The hospitalizations are way, way down. And it's time to just move on with our life, let these businesses open up the way that they see fit and let we as citizens accomplish our freedoms here in Celine County. Thank you, guys, for listening to me and I hope this had an impact on you guys.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Farber. Any other people like to speak this morning?
My toy? It's more than that. Oh, I'm concerned that...
Please state your name and address, please.
Ken Ritz from Salina.
He can't hear. Get closer.
All righty.
Thank you.
Good. Yes, I'm concerned that we've made too much of... Or too little of too much and too much of too little. A virus doesn't respect our history, our constitution, other than our physical constitution and it doesn't have much respect for that. If in fact, and I think the evidence is quite clear now, although Fauci still holds to some other explanations as well, that the transmission of the COVID virus is overwhelmingly through the air and as an aerosol, not as droplets. If that's the case, and as I say, the evidence is pretty clear on that. And I don't know, hopefully you folks all received, I know Commissioner White did, I handed it to him, a wonderful piece of work done by a professor of chemistry at Colorado University, whose specialty for the last 20 years has been aerosols. Aerosol, as they point out, is, when you hear aerosol, think smoke. It's something that hangs in the air where droplets of a much larger size, gravity will bring them to where you want to be sure to vacuum your carpets. And anyway, that is a wonderful exposition that he and several hundred other scientists around the world put together, concerned that that was being missed. But the mask is intended, and it works up to a point. My glasses will probably fog up soon. That's the point that shows you that it isn't working 100%. None of the masks do. And that's a shame because that's an area of, we've had time to develop better-fitting masks. The material that they're made of is also a concern. And we can improve in that area.
One minute.
Yes.
One minute left.
Oh, all right, well. But filtering the air is something that a mask, we do individually. There are other means that we need to look at as much or more. This is one. This is just an air purifier with a HEPA filter. The key is the HEPA filter. It's tight enough that it will trap most of the virus. HEPA filters for your HVAC systems, including the one in this building. Does anyone know if that's been attended to? And of course, just good old fresh air, getting change in the air. How many changes in air in this basement room are we getting every hour? We've let all those things go by so that we can stand on our soapboxes and speak of dealing with a really deadly and hurtful situation as though it were not a public concern. What you inhale is your business. What you exhale becomes everybody else's.
Yes.
And it's as simple as that. You have a right to put your fist wherever you want it, as long as somebody's face isn't in front of it.
Okay.
And likewise with your breathing. As long as you don't exhale, you don't need to wear a mask.
Yep.
So...
Thank you.
So anyway.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to speak?
Norman Adams, Salina. What are the ingredients in that vaccine? We've never heard anybody say, is there any harmful ingredients in that vaccine?
Yep. Your guess is good as mine, Norm. It's like, I'm not the physician, not the builder of it. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay. This time, we'd like to, we'll move on if someone does speak, we'll move to the consent agenda. Is there any Commissioners that'd like to remove or have any comments on the agenda? Okay. If not, we approve the delete items. Very no objection. The agenda will be approved as the tax rule adjustments, accounts payable, and the public forum agenda as presented. Action items?
Item number one, RFA 138-21, Greater Salina Community Funds Pet Program with Rosie Walters, Senior Services Director.
Good morning, Rosie. There she is. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Senior Services is requesting commission approval to accept $4,219 from the Greater Salina Community Foundation in funding for our new program, Meals on Wheels and Healthcare for Pets program. This funding will cover the cost of the pet food and treats. Senior Services has collaborated with the Friends of the Animal Shelter and Atherton Veterinary Clinic to provide healthcare and food for pets of Meals on Wheels participants. A survey was sent out to all of our Meals on Wheels participants asking if they would benefit from this program. They did respond that it would benefit quite a few. As you know, these are homebound seniors that are unable or have limited resources to go out and shop for food or take their pet to the vet. Senior Services does want to remove this barrier for seniors so that they're able to stay in their homes. It is beneficial for seniors to have their pet companion with them. Currently, we have 21 pets enrolled in the program. Friends of the Animal Shelter has been running out, picking up pets, getting their toenails trimmed. They've had some minor surgeries. We do spay and neutering. So, yeah, the alternatives for action is to deny requests or approve requests. On a side note, I was going to say that Atherton is providing all of the food at their cost. So we are requesting that the commission approve and accept the Greater Salina Community Foundation grant funding. And these dollars will be used to purchase pet food supplies. Deliveries of these supplies will be distributed monthly to Meals on Wheels participants by staff, not by volunteers. And the budget impact, healthcare costs is covered by Friends of the Animal Shelter and food costs will be provided by the Greater Salina Community Foundation grant funds. And there will be no cost to seniors participating in this program or to Celine County.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions by the Commissioners?
Well, Commissioner Vidrickson, Rosie, I assume that we are not charging anything to the people, to the recipients? Is that correct?
Correct. There's no cost to them.
And there, when someone, when we deliver the meal, there is a charge for that. Am I correct again?
Yes, you are correct.
And how do we know that this year-long program is not going to exceed $4,200? If this thing starts to grow and all of a sudden you have 40 or 50 pets enrolled in the program, how are we going to cover that cost?
Well, if it does grow like that, I definitely would seek out additional grant funding for it. We do have different options. Right now, we have a big fundraiser going on with Long MacArthur and Petals Flowers, Kindred Hospice, Lincoln Park Memorial Health, and they are doing a big fundraiser right now, collecting food and donations. So they even put in a GoFundMe page for it. So, yeah, I think that the support for this program is huge within Celine County. They do understand that the need to keep our seniors in their home and be healthy, both mentally and physically, is dire, especially with the COVID right now. So the support from the community, I think, will carry on. We will continue to ask for grants. We will continue to ask for community support. Does that answer your question?
Well, not really, but I mean, I'm not against this, so I don't, I think for to stir the pot any further on my part would be detrimental to what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, and let me jump onto that because one of the questions I had also with the situation was is that we're not charged enough for that. And if Rosie was saying that she actually makes the deliveries in the company car and did this and this, so all of a sudden, it becomes an issue where the company is funding that because the county is paying for the fuel in that car and the insurance and everything else. What happens, my concern was, is that what happens up and above that when you have other people, like she said, our staff is going to do that? What happens to that staff when those people start turning in vouchers for returning on their mileage that they get? So all of a sudden, but if she's saying that the donations and everything else and this here will take care of this, I guess we need to try it and see where it does go. So that's my thought on that. Does anyone else have any comments? Any public wish to speak on the situation? We'll bring it back to the Commission for discussion and possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the GSC funds for Meals on Wheels as presented.
Second motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 138-21, Greater Salina Community Funds Pet Program. Are there any further comments? I want to call for the vote. All in favor? Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick. Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Move on to the next item.
RFA 139-21, Cartograph Maintenance Contract Renewal with Darren Fischel, Road and Bridge Administrator.
Good morning, Darren.
Good morning, Commissioners. This request for action is for Cartograph Maintenance Contract Renewal. It's to enter into a license agreement with Cartograph Solutions. This is the software used at Road and Bridge to manage workflow, track assets, log traffic counts, track vehicle and equipment maintenance, shopping yard inventory, and aggregate uses. The cost is for year one of $28,340.26. Year two is $29,190.47. Year three would be $30,066.19. We have a termination for non-appropriation clause in the contract for governmental customers that if funds are not appropriated or otherwise made available to support the continuation of its obligations under this agreement, this contract will be terminated automatically as of the beginning of the period for which funds are not available. Customers shall provide 60 days' written notice to Cartograph of such non-appropriation of funds and this agreement shall terminate, provided however that each party shall remain liable for all obligations accrued to the date of such termination. This agreement is governed by the Kansas Cash Basis Law. Mike Montoya did review the contract. The alternatives for action would be to accept the agreement from Cartograph Solutions or two, do not accept the agreement and direct staff to an alternative. Staff recommends entering into the agreement with Cartograph Solutions. The contract is for three years with a 3% increase every year versus 5% to 7% increase with an annual contract. This is guaranteed for the life of the contract. Road and Bridge has used some form of Cartograph software since 2007. We moved to the current form of software in 2015. It has been a very productive tool for our department. Rural operators now enter their own time, which has freed up administrative resources. It tracks asset condition, location, and history. They're all available to all users. And we have nearly eliminated the need for paper-related for most items in the maintenance department. Plans, conditions, locates, work to be performed, work performed, and photographs are all in one central location. This can be accessed from a mobile device and eliminates the need to make a trip to the office to turn in time seats or do research. The budget impact is the first year amount, $28,340.26 will be taken out of the computer maintenance budget line item. $29,190.47 year two and $30,066.19 year three will also be taken from the computer maintenance budget line item.
Quick question. What is your total budget per year for computer maintenance?
You know, that is an IT or Brad Bowers question.
Okay.
I know Brad said he was on Zoom and...
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I believe, I'm going from memory here, but I believe that that line item has about $315,000 in it.
Okay. And is this, these three years, this takes care of three years? So then after these three years, does it come back and rotate again for the next three years also?
We would probably at that point have to negotiate a new contract.
Okay. So this is per year?
Yes.
Okay. So are you looking at, I know this isn't the first time, but do you look at putting this in as a line item into your budget instead of taking it out of computer maintenance? Or is that the best place to put it?
You know, that's, this is just how the way we've handled in the past. This is my first RFA for this type of agreement.
Okay. Mr. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, County Minister Phil Smith-Haines. So the technology, the routine maintenance for all departments, not just Road and Bridge, is budgeted in a single line item in the IT budget. And we could look at changing that to better account for individual programs, but that's just sort of how we've been doing it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions by Commissioners?
Darren, how long has Celine County been associated with Cartograph?
Since 2007, so 14 years or so. When we first started with Cartograph was before I came to work here. And then we had a version of it that was called Navigator that really wasn't what we thought it should be. And so they came out with the OMS version, which was mobile-friendly to where it really makes all of our information real-time. You know, typically, I'll just use an example. Before, a rural operator would have to fill out a time sheet and a map of where he went and what he did that day. And he would send that map into the office and then someone in there would enter his time and log where he'd been. Now, now the rural operator has an iPad and he just puts it in there at the end of each day. That way, if you call me tomorrow and say, hey, our road hasn't been bladed in two weeks, I can instantly pull that up and say, well, there was a motor grader there on such and such a day. That's just a little instance of the, before you had to go through a stack of maps and just little things like that that really freed up administrative resources.
Darren, I believe my question's been answered, but to confirm it, our IT department has been involved in the software package?
Absolutely, absolutely. They have been very instrumental in getting it to where we need it to be.
I assume so, but I didn't know it for sure. So thank you.
Darren, you said this is the first RFA for this, but yet in your information here, it says we've been doing it since 2007. How's it been appropriated before if we've never used an RFA for this?
This is the first time I have done an RFA for the maintenance contract. In the past, it had been done by IT.
$90,000 is a lot of money. I mean, I just, I have a hard time, and I'm not a computer person, but it just seems to me like this is, with the things that you've outlined here, it seems to me that this is something that our IT department should be able to accomplish. And to spend another $90,000 on this, to me, it seems, you know, a lot of money to spend on something that it seems to me like we could, with the things that you've outlined anyway, that we could be doing that ourselves. I guess that would take another, for another conversation.
And I just want to, my same kind of thoughts on that was too, but when I looked at it and then I looked at, when you have 40 users and $14,000 just for those users, $345 or so a year, I'm thinking that's kind of like a, you know, roughly $10 a month or $20 a month. To have that on that iPad, to have those deals where those users can use, utilize all that software. And I look at it, then the other, the $12,000 price for the software is to run everything else is, yeah, it's expensive. It's very expensive and it's kind of one of those things where I'm the same way. I look at it. I look at it and go, wow. But per user, it's not a bad situation I look at, you know? But anyway, it's another one of those, it is what it is. Yes. Yes.
Yeah, so Cartograph is one of those things. There are a limited number of companies who provide this kind of software specifically for Road and Bridge departments. And so it certainly is something we could look at, whether we switch to a competitor and see if they could, you know, come in with something cheaper. Then you're of course dealing with the transition time to get everybody up to speed on a new program. So, but the, this, this cost has increased. I mean, that's, there's, there's, there's no doubt about that. As for in-house staff developing a program like this, we do not have in-house programming staff. Our, our staff is, concentrates on making sure that we have the ability to extract information and keep the system up and running. So the, the thing that you get into when you have in-house programming staff is then if those people retire, then that, that creates another set of problems. So that's why most of the software that we use countywide is market, you know, things that we can buy off of the market, whether it be Microsoft products or in this case Cartograph, which is one of those major national users. But yes, it is a, it is an expensive cost of doing business. There is no doubt about that.
Well, that's interesting information. I mean, in my fifth year here, I wasn't aware of that. I just assumed that most IT departments had programmers within their department. That, that's, that's good information to know. I mean, I'm obviously questioning this whole process and, and all the while, we didn't, we just don't have the people to program it. So in other words, our IT department is more of a maintenance situation as opposed to the programming, which is, like I said, I'm, I'm not a real computer expert by any stretch of the imagination. So that's, that's where I'm a little bit off base there, I assume, so. But that having been said, when, when you look at costs like these, $90,000, pretty soon it looks to me like we could hire a programmer. You know, if we've got all, every, every department out there is buying programs and we're paying for different, different situations. So I'm, I'm going to vote for this because I, I don't feel like I have enough wherewithal or information on my, to vote against it. And, and you've explained that to me, but I am against spending the $90,000. I just think we need to look further down the line and see what we can do here. I mean, you know, look, look five or 10 years down the road. And if, and if that means that we need to start looking at hiring a programmer to save, this is just one item and we're talking $30,000 a year, so.
Yes, and something else, I, I went to Cartograph's website and was looking at some of the programs and what, what it does do. One of the questions I have is since, you know, this does include like vehicle maintenance and all this other stuff. And here internally for the whole county, is, is there some way somehow that we could look at utilizing that software to take control of maybe of the whole fleet of the county vehicles and stuff and help out in that situation?
You know, that would be an internal discussion.
Yes, but I just, yes, I mean, looking down the road like Mr. Vidrickson said, you know, I just looked at it and thought, you know, that'd be kind of a what if, you know, to look at down the road. And, but I, it's a, what a neat, all the softwares that included in this OMS software is just unbelievable of what it does do. Yeah, so it's kind of a neat situation. So anyway, any other comments or by the Commissioners? Any public wish to speak?
Can I, can I have a couple of words real quick?
Yes.
The OMS software is a cloud-based system. It is disaster recovery type of software as well. The, the monetary value of that is if you look at Greensburg, what happened there? Everything's gone. Similar to this is if, if this building were to go away, Road and Bridge were to go away, we would still have the ability to access this in the cloud. It stores all of our data out there, all of our history. Again, the fleet maintenance, the tasks, ability to get some cost involved with the mile and things like that, a grid mile. It does have custom modules in there where they can, we can go out and create culverts. We track what, some 6,000 culverts out there, Darren?
Yep.
Something like that. And we do maintenance on that. We track small structures that aren't considered bridges, but aren't considered culverts either. They're just somewhere in between. It has the ability to do custom report writer for it, so we can build different reports for their needs, your needs, things like that, in addition to the filtering part of it where we don't have to go out and do all of the, the custom data pulls from it. I can go out and set a filter up for them, save it, and alls they have to do is turn it on and off to get the data that they want to get out of it instantly. And y'all have seen some of the queries that we have wrote that show all of our, all of our earth roads, all of our gravel roads, all of our pavement roads, things like that. And when's the last time in the past seven years, how many times have they been on this road? In the past six months, how many times have they been on this road? So it's a really powerful, powerful software. And, and having it in the cloud away from us completely is, is valuable enough to me, in my opinion, to say if something should happen in here, we're not going to have to worry about it because it's somewhere.
Yes.
You might, might say that that was Lauren Humphrey from our IT department. And Lauren is a valued employee here at the Slaying County, so thank you for the additional information.
Any other comments?
Well, I know that many times you, you get into a, you buy into a software and go into a contractual agreement and, and you hope that, that the expense of that year after year doesn't grow at a fast rate or something. You hate to think that, that you were lowballed into something and, and now you're paying a price because you invested so much into this product. I don't believe that's the case here. And with that being said, I, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve by signature the agreement with Cartograph Solutions as presented.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 139-21 Categraph Maintenance Contract Renewal.
Any public comments?
Any public comments? I'll call for the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick. Commissioner Sparks. Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Next item?
Item number three, RFA 140-21 Nimble Storage Area Network Device with Lauren Humphrey, database administrator with computer technology.
Good morning, Lauren.
Hello again. The county IT department is requesting permission to expend $35,000 at Eagle Software in Salina for a nimble storage area network device. This storage area network device will go out and replace our aging Equal logic that we currently have out at Road and Bridge for our disaster recovery site. We have two different, we have two different quotes on that. Both are for the same exact storage array. You can see that the HPE quote is twice as much as the Eagle Software. The Eagle Software is a partner of HPE and kind of tried to explain that out that they really do encourage their partners to sell these devices and that's kind of why they get this huge discount from it. So Cisco, HPE, you know, they have a bunch of different, a bunch of different devices that they would sell, Softwares and Things, Dell. They do get cheaper because HPE is a partner of theirs and so they do get a lot of discounts. And that's, and that's why you can see that HPE does sell both of these or sells these, but Eagle gets a better discount from it because they are a partner of HPE's.
Okay.
And the county is requesting to fund this project of $35,000 based on the expenditures and the three-year maintenance cost. Any questions?
Lauren, I just have, and we're talking about this here, how many, and I relate to terabyte, how large is this?
So you, so you can imagine a standard picture is about five megabytes. You can probably put a million of them on there, two million or so. And, and imagine, we tend to double our size data, digital the data. We double it every about three to five years. And so the last time we bought a nimble storage device was about three years ago. And so we tend to exponentially just grow, double ourselves. And so what this does is this increases our data size twice. I think it's a 40, I think it's a 42 terabyte sand. Right now, we currently have a 21. And we're, we're sliding up to the edge and it's, and for IT to be able to say, well, we can wait until next year to get it. Well, we, we could possibly run out of storage before the next year. And so, you know, we tend to try to double our storage arrays. And what, what'll happen is this nimble that we currently have here will go out to Road and Bridge to replace that aging Equal logic that we have out there. And I believe we're going to use the Equal logic to replace, to, to store some digital video for the jail. So it's going to be repurposed and just store some digital video for the jail so they can have more space.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I assume this was an identified budget item for 2021?
That is correct. It's part of the TIP.
Okay. Any other questions or comments by the Commissioners? Any comments by the public? If not, we'll bring you back to the commission for discussion or public possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we allow IT to expend $35,000 with Eagle Incorporated of Salina.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 140-21 Nimble Storage Area Network Device. Are there any further comments? By the public, anybody? I want to call for the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick. Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item number four, RFA 141-21 2021 Hot Mix Asphalt Construction Bid with Justin Mater, county engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners. So I'm here to, to discuss and take action on Slaying County Road and Bridge Department request to award the bid for hot mix asphalt pavement, profile milling, and aggregate shouldering construction. Sealed bids were opened on March 17th, 2021 at 11 o'clock. One bid was received from Apex, Kansas. You should have in your packet, the bid tabs, which will give you more details of the bid. Also, just to let you know that, you know, since I've been here, it's pretty typical that we just get one bid for asphalt construction. You know, they're a local company and really for another contractor to bid on it, they would have to mobilize a plant in. And, you know, that cost is, is pretty high to do that. And so they can't really compete with the, the local asphalt plant that's here permanently. And so that's why we usually get one bid. I know in the past before me, there's been another bidder, but that's just because they've been doing other work for KDOT and they're, you know, already moving in a plant for another big project, but that's just not the case this year. So project locations included in the overlay milling and shouldering bid are Old 81 Highway from K143 Highway to the Slaying Ottawa County Line. This project does include adding a three-foot asphalt widening on both sides of the pavement. Another location is on West Old Highway 40 from the I-135, where the concrete pavement ends, and then it extends east to the city limits of Salina. This project also includes a three-foot asphalt widening from the I-135 concrete pavement to the State Street intersection. Then there's State Street from Old Highway 40 east to the city limits. And then there's North Street from the UPS Building east to Old Highway 40. All asphalt and shouldering work must be completed by December 1st of 2021. There will be, as we've done in the past, will not allow any work during wheat harvest. And as well as the, the bid tabs, you should also have the title sheet, which will show you the, the project locations as well. Alternatives for action would be to accept the bid as indicated in the staff recommendation or to reject the bids. Staff recommends to accept the bid from Apex, Kansas for the amount of estimated work to The, the price of the, the cost of asphalt this year compared to the cost of the asphalt last year is actually a little bit lower. You know, and again, I'm, I'm looking at the, the longer runs of the project locations like Old 81 Highway. So it's, it's what, three miles long? So this year they bid, let me pull that out, make sure I get the right numbers here. So you got $74.10 per ton of asphalt placed. And I believe last year, if you looked at the longer projects, we were at $76 per ton of asphalt. So I'm, I'm pretty pleased with the unit prices that they did bid on. Funds for the hot mix overlay milling and shouldering work, which will equal about $1,013,695.57, will be taken from the budgeted line item contractual asphalt work. This line item has a current unencumbered balance of $2.5 million. So however, the other contractual work that will be taken from this line item is the chip seal, crack seal, and aggregate shouldering contracts. Funds for the three-foot asphalt widening, which is estimated to be $287,598.73, are considered roadway improvements and will be taken from the 124 Account Special Road Construction. The roadway widening is included in the road upgrade project list that we developed last year.
Okay, thank you. Justin, are there any questions or comments by the Commissioners?
Will there be additional projects going on throughout the summer and next fall of the same magnitude?
No, this is, this should be all of our overlay, overlay type work.
Okay, thank you.
And Justin, these are all, all four important projects. Been on the county's radar for a long time and.
Yes, they have.
Hopefully it'll get approved here shortly, so.
Yes.
Okay. Are any members of the public who wish to speak? I will bring it back to the commission for discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to Apex, Kansas for the project number 215447 for hot mix asphalt construction.
Second to motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 141-21 2021 Hot Mix Asphalt Construction Bid. Any further comments? If not, we'll call for the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick. Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Now we'll move on to informational items.
Creation of Assistant County Engineer Position with Justin Mater, county engineer.
We'll just let you take care of it again, okay?
Okay, that sounds good. So the, the current Slaying County Surveyor has retired from Slaying County. I'm requesting consideration from the Board of County Commissioners to allow me to reorganize my staff by replacing the county surveyor position with an Assistant County Engineer. Due to the retirement of the county surveyor, my office has lost the ability of, for the land survey and portion of it is to locate section corners, to perform survey reviews, and write legal descriptions. But along with those land surveying duties, my office has also lost a, a staff member who also performed preliminary topographic survey. They also had a design projects for approval by the county engineer, a construction inspector, a material. a material tester and a certified bridge inspector. As my office moves forward, my biggest concern is our ability to complete project designs within a reasonable timeframe. This has been a concern and the loss of a staff member who also designs compounds that problem. Therefore, instead of replacing the county surveyor position, I ask the commission to create an Assistant County Engineer position. This position would be a licensed professional engineer. Experience has proven that counties hiring land surveyors with a, a design experience or even a PE, a professional engineer with a design experience to come work for a county can be very, very challenging. However, I believe the chances of finding a professional engineer with design experience will be much greater than hiring a land surveyor with design and construction knowledge. So the, the benefits of hiring a professional engineer include, and I think this is the most important, is it provides a smooth succession plan to keep projects and programs moving forward if something would happen to the county engineer, which would be me. And I really do think this is, this is very, very critical for my office. An Assistant County Engineer would provide the needed redundancy and continuity within the office for both design and construction. And this would help manage, you know, extended staff leave and we can keep things rolling, moving forward. The current design needs are beyond my ability to keep, to complete the projects within a reasonable timeframe. A PE will help me keep project, projects on staff. An experienced designer will also provide a professional review of designs. The projects, you know, all projects should require a thorough review with a fresh set of eyes to identify any errors in design or plan sets. You know, there's, we deal with a lot of details, you know, and it's, there's always details that you're going to miss, you're going to overthink, especially when you're in the weeds of a design and having that fresh set of eyes. Look over, you know, what you're doing is, is a, a really good practice, practice to have. Also, a licensed professional engineer, an experienced licensed professional engineer is less likely to leave Slaying County within a few years of, of employment compared to an intern. You know, typically in my industry, an intern, so they'll work for a company and then there's a good chance, just because of where they're at in their life, you know, they always, you know, find employment somewhere else because they want to move, they're getting married and their spouse takes them somewhere else. There's a lot of reasons why, why interns don't stick around usually for the long haul. Though rare, some professional engineers have a dual PE and land surveying license. You know, this would be my preference for an Assistant County Engineer. However, if a dual licensed engineer does not apply, I would prefer to hire a professional engineer and then hire a local consultant to perform the duties required of the land surveying. And, and those duties would be to, you know, locate section corners and, and follow the, the section corner ties and everything that deals with the section corners, perform survey reviews and write legal descriptions. I've discussed these tasks with a, a local consultant here and I believe that these costs would be anywhere in the range of $15,000 to $20,000 per year for the consulting services. So I've, I've included a document in your packet, which does list the responsibilities in the engineering office as well as a document that models the task that would be assigned to each member in my office if I had, if I was allowed to hire an Assistant County Engineer. So as far as the, the budget impact, current salary budget for the engineering office is This includes a position for the county engineer, county surveyor and three engineering technicians. The Assistant County Engineer position salary range would be, is, is estimated to be in the $75,000, $85,000 range pending a classification review by Archer. If a PE applicant has a dual land surveying license, there would be some premium pay estimated to be around $10,000 on top of the Assistant County Engineer salary because they would have the dual roles. So as a, as a, an estimate or scenario, the total engineering salaries with a county engineer, a, a mid-range professional engineer of, as, as well as a, a land survey, so they have the dual license, and this would be for the Assistant County Engineer at Engineering Tech III and an Engineering Tech II would be around $312,000. So, and if this was the case, I would officially eliminate the third engineering tech position. I feel that the abilities of, of a, a land surveyor or a PE slash land surveyor would fulfill our needs and there wouldn't be really a need to have that, that fifth position for an engineering tech.
Okay. Any comments?
Justin, I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
First and foremost, it's a thorough report. You've spent a lot of time, I can see, in trying to explain the pros and the cons. I appreciate that. I guess my issue is, in the history of Slaying County, since early 90s, Slaying County's had many different engineers prior to you, but there's only been one engineer in charge of that department. And now we're all of a sudden looking, looking at an assistant engineer. And I understand your arguments in regards to the demands of the surveyor, which is what, basically what the county needs right now, seeing as how we lost. Excuse me. And so I just wondered if you could maybe enlighten me a little bit in regards to, are you overworked? You're, you're cranking out projects like all the other engineers before you? What am I missing here?
So this is, you know, my, my knowledge of how the office ran in the past has been talking with other staff members. You know, and I'm, I'm trying to do my, I did my best to try to understand, you know, kind of how things were, were happening. For, for a while, probably since the 90s, I'm not sure how far back this goes, a lot of the design for bridges, I'm not sure about road projects, but for bridges was, and I'm talking about the design, the survey, the design and the planned production was performed by two, mainly, the majority of it by two engineering technicians and the county engineer, or and the county surveyor. Sorry, one technician and a county, and the county surveyor. Two years before I showed up, I believe there was a county surveyor and then another technician took over a lot of those duties and were, were putting projects together. Okay? So it's, again, I wasn't there, but I, I don't know how much involvement the county engineer had in the development of those projects. But it's my understanding that it was less than what I have now. And so when I came on board, I evaluated the design process and the plan set that was, that was created and it just didn't meet my standards. Okay? So I, I felt like, okay, everything's going to be underneath my professional seal, which is, you know, my livelihood. And so it's very important that things are going to be done my way. And so I, I looked at how things were done and I decided we needed to make a change. And, but in order, so in order to make those, that change, I took the duties away from the, the technicians for the design because I had to figure, okay, how do I want this office with this staff and our abilities to, to move forward? And I had to kind of develop that system. And, you know, and that was probably early in 2019. And then, you know, we had a lot of the flooding and I had a lot of FEMA, I'm going to just call it stuff, to do with the, all that flooding. And so developing that system kind of had to be put on the back burner a little bit while I had to deal with all the, not just the FEMA, but then there was also some road projects that we wanted to get done. The Waterwell Road from Burma to Lightfield, you know, and that, that took a significant amount of time too. And so that kind of really slowed everything down, you know, and everything was kind of bogged down, you know, with me as I was trying to do all these other things as well as develop how we're going to design these bridge projects. Eventually I got things sorted out, this is how I want to move forward. And so, because my intent was to have the, the county surveyor and engineering tech continue then doing a lot of that design work upfront. And it was, it was, you know, like any new process, as well as new software, trying to teach, you know, new software to the, one of the engineering techs, you know, it's an investment and that investment is usually time, you know? And so it's, it takes time to get staff to a level that I want them to be at, you know, so that my involvement is a little bit, is, is minimized too, so we can move forward. And so losing the county surveyor, lost a big portion of that design. You know, and so that's where I'm thinking, you know, my biggest hole that I have in my office is the, the design need. And so that's why I'm, I'm asking to hire a PE to fulfill that. Now I do think having a land surveyor in my office would be wonderful and I think that's, that's, that would be great to have and that's why I'm, my first priority would be to hire a dual licensed, you know, PE and land surveyor, because then that kind of fills all of, all of my needs in my office. You know, another thing too to consider is, you know, I have a, an engineering technician, you know, that's been talking about retirement too. You know, he's been around a long time, he's got a lot of experience, knows a lot of things. And so I'm also kind of setting this up to where when this individual retires, I can bring in a, a more entry-level design tech, which would be a lot easier to fill than a very experienced technician, you know, with that design ability, you know, as well, as well as design and construction ability. And so I'm, I'm, I'm trying to set my office up to where that can be a lot smoother transition as well.
If, if I might ask a couple of questions, Roger.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, of the administrator, and I'm looking for a one-word answer. Are you in approval of, of this proposal? Thank you. With that, I'm in favor of it also. I, I think you've outlined this fine in, in response to Commissioner White's inquiries. It wasn't, but two years ago, we'd never had an assistant administrator either, but we hired one because of all the additional responsibilities. Last year, we hired a assistant road superintendent, which we had, which we had had before, but we eliminated it and now we're back into it because of additional responsibilities and the workload and so forth. With the work that you've done here and the way you've outlined this, I'm very much in favor of it. I'm, I'm in favor of letting the department heads or make their own proposals, their own determinations and, and bringing it to us, just like you have done here. You've outlined this very well and I'm in favor of it, period.
Justin, I, I appreciate the work you put into this proposal and I, I know that you're streamlining of your department. It seems like you're going to be able to do more at, at less of a cost for us and I appreciate that. And knowing that it has the administrator's blessing weighs quite a bit with me also. One question. With the loss of the land surveyor, are we contracting that out now and is that done? Is that open to, to land surveyors within the county or in the proximity of the county? Or how, how are you handling the need for a, a land surveyor right now?
So what, what I've, my, my immediate need is the survey reviews. We have all the projects that's the, the, in the near future have been surveyed, the section corners have been found. So I don't really have a section corner need, immediate need right now. So it's just a survey reviews. So, so there's this transition period that really I'm, I'm trying to deal with, I'm trying to manage. And so what I did is I just reached out to a, a consulting firm to provide those services. And there's an agreement that Mr. Montoya was reviewing, had some comments about providing those as-needed survey services and I plan on coming to you next week to accept that. But I did not feel the need to go out and get proposals from all of these survey company, or from all these consulting companies because I'm, hopefully, you know, this is only going to be a, a month-long need, you know, that I need or, you know, until we can get someone replaced. Once we figure out what the, the, the replacement's going to be, we can figure out a more long-term solution. So, so I'm going to have this scenario that if we cannot find a dual PE and land surveyor and we hire a professional engineer, so then we have these survey needs. What I would come to you and try to get your blessing is that we go out for proposals to provide those services. And again, it's, it's almost on a as-needed basis to all the, the consulting firms in town. But as a temporary basis, because it's something that, that, you know, it needs to happen pretty quick, I just called a local company, you know, to provide me an, an agreement with some hourly costs so we can, we can meet the immediate needs right now.
With this being an informational item, are, are we looking for a consensus here or is this just information?
This is really just to get some feedback from the commission. Justin had spoken with the HR director and myself about this and was prepared to do an RFA and we said, well, let's, let's just do an informational item first, give the commission some time to mull it over, ask some questions and then he can come back with, with an RFA if, if you all are supportive. So that was kind of the game plan.
Thank you.
I, I for one, appreciate that approach because if there is any doubt in our minds, anyone's mind from week, you know, a few days, plus or minus, it gives them some time to think about it rather than five minutes of, of listening to your presentation. So I, I appreciate that approach and, and I also appreciate Commissioner Weiss's question as to whether it's a consensus or a, you know, an action item, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
And Justin, believe you me, I appreciate your concerns. I wasn't trying to beat you up or anything. I just needed to ask the questions. I appreciate that. But in my eyes, we definitely need a surveyor and the way to get to the, from point A to point B is forthcoming and keeping an open mind. I'd be more than happy to look at this again next week. That'll give me a week to possibly come up with some more questions or thoughts or ideas and that would be my preference and I appreciate a week to study it.
And I have a question and I hate to even bring it up, except I was contacted by local surveyors and stuff, companies. And one of my questions to you is, is how did you end up making the decision to go to one company for this surveying if you have to right now?
So what I, I did is, you know, there's, there's a handful of engineering companies, you know, as well as some survey companies, whether it's a company or an individual in the area. What I, so something I, I had to kind of think about is, you know, the surveyors, surveyors who submit a survey or review, I didn't want to have that conflict of interest that they're also doing the survey, survey review process. So they submit a survey, but they're also doing the survey review process and have that kind of conflict of interest. You know, not really knowing exactly how, you know, all the, you know, that process works, I'm kind of learning as I go, but I just wanted to eliminate that. And so typically I, I don't really know, you know, in the past, how many surveys from which company and from which surveyor was submitted for review, but I did kind of see the number of people that came into my office to do reviews. And so I eliminated, you know, again, for this very temporary timeframe, this transition timeframe, you know, the companies that I saw this quite a bit, those surveyors that came into my office quite a bit. So it's like, well, I'm just going to eliminate those, you know, right away. And so, so I, I elected to go with a company that was still, deals with counties, because that's another thing too. I want to work with a company that works with counties. You know, to me, that's important, you know, you know, that a business is, 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 you know, works with other counties throughout the state. And so that's kind of why I selected the company that I did. Again, we're, you know, I'm hoping that it's less than two or three surveys, you know? So really, dollar-wise, we're, it's minimal. I mean, we're not talking many dollars at all.
Well, this was just an emergency Band-Aid that you reached out for. If this does turn out to be a long term, then you'll go a different route.
Correct, yes, absolutely. That's a very good way of putting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. It's, what a great job you've put together here. Thank you, everybody. Any other comments?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if you're looking for a consensus to be made, I'm in favor of allowing staff to move forward and bring back to us next week, or whenever they get proposed, an RFA and a proposal to move with this.
Okay. I was gonna ask, is there any public comment?
Well, it's not an RFA.
Nope.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
But seeing none. And a consensus has been made by Commissioner Vidrickson? And do we have a consensus?
I've already stated my opinion to review it.
Yeah, I'm quite happy with the presentation, and look forward to seeing your RFA.
Me, too, also. So I look forward to the projected outcome here.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners' comments? Administrators' comments?
Don't have anything this week.
You're looking at me like I wanna speak. Okay. Announcements? I'd just say the Farm Expo starts today, so everyone can go attend that in the rain and have a good trip. So, any other comments? What's, I'd say, okay, hearing none, no further business, meeting adjourned. Thank you.